This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the Town of North Haven.
I'm Mike Frieda, North Haven's first selectman, and I'm joined tonight by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Bellamy. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance, we could flag the United States of America, and consider Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we're going to do a roll call for those on Zoom. I see Rod Williams, Rich Lo Presti. Anyone else on this call?
We have Mrs. Kleiman, Ms. Kleiman.
I'm mine as a visitor, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay, I'm mine.
Okay.
And we have, this is Jennifer Capola, council for the town, and we do have all members of the Board of Selectmen present this evening. I'm sorry that we are getting started late. We did have a problem with the Zoom login, but I'm glad that you all stuck with us. Thank you so much. So I am going to make some introductory comments, and then I will go through the Affordable Housing Plan, the draft that has been posted for this meeting, and that is under consideration for adoption by the Board of Selectmen. Just first off, by way of introductory comments, I just want to thank the Board of Selectmen for the honor of assisting the town in the preparation of its first Affordable Housing Plan. In years past, the Affordable Housing Plan has been included in your plan of conservation and development, but as you know, the statute was passed requiring all municipalities within the state to pass a separate Affordable Housing Plan. It's been a great process, one in which the committee members and myself learned so much about housing. The plan just tells some of the story, but it most certainly provides critical guidance, I think, to the town as it embarks down the path of encouraging the creation of more affordable housing options for the residents of the town and for individuals who would like to call North Haven home. I want to individually thank the members of the Affordable Housing Committee for giving so much time, significant amount of time and attention to this endeavor. Certainly provided them with a lot of information, many documents to review, data coming from the SCROG, the Council of Governments, and the consultant that they hired to gather demographic data about housing, not only in the town of North Haven, but all the towns in the COGS region, so all 15 member municipalities. And they looked at a lot of information. They looked at a lot of draft plans from other towns as well. And they also listened to some input from community leaders who we invited to participate in outreach meetings. So the members of our committee, again, were Chair David Monds, Vice Chair Rod Williams, who is on Zoom, Secretary Bethany Zemba, Goldie Adele, Ray Andrusson, Alden Need, Steve Miller, Christine Reardon, Bill Richards, who's also here in person, and Marvin Wilson. In addition, I want to thank the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, who also attended joint meetings with the committee to offer their input on the drafting of the plan. Planning and zoning administrator Alan Frederickson and Rich Lo Presti, who attended many meetings. He's Chair of your Housing Authority, the North Haven Housing Authority. There were several members of the community, as I indicated, who participated in outreach meetings. Their input was invaluable, I think, to the committee to learn about the specific segments of the community that are in need of affordable housing. So that information obviously proved invaluable as well to our education about housing needs. The SCROG and its consultant, RKG Associates, provided, again, significant data regarding housing in the town and region and the affordability gap, so the need for affordable housing. And lastly, the contribution of Glenn Scholder of Plan and Metrics, who is the committee's consultant on the draft that is before you tonight, really cannot be overstated. He did a terrific job in terms of revising the plan and crafting something that is well suited to North Haven. So before I begin to review the plan with you, I do want to acknowledge, because I don't want to forget about him because he did travel a distance to be with us, I want to acknowledge Ben Frank. Ben, maybe you want to just stand up and kind of wave at everyone. So Ben is a community organizer facility who's been hired by the Council of Governments, your South Central Council of Governments, as a consultant to assist the member municipalities in execution of their respective Affordable Housing Plan. So as we go through the plan, you'll see that one of the goals, well, actually, it's a strategy, is to either continue on the work of the committee with a new committee or potentially establish an Affordable Housing Commission. And Ben will work with that entity to support them in educating the community about affordable housing, about the plan, and assisting in any way that he can on execution of the plan. So I am, at this point, I'm going to screen share the plan, so if you could just bear with me. Because I have to now find it on. Okay, can the folks that are online, can you see the plan? Can the folks online see the Affordable Housing Plan?
No.
This is Rod.
No.
No, I don't see it.
Now it's up. You go back into Zoom and you can screen share.
Yes, you share your screen.
Yes, I'm not. I'm not quite sure why that is.
Here, do you go to screen share again? Go to share screen.
I have a copy of the plan.
And then, there you go.
Now can you see it?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, I can see it.
Okay. So I am going to, because we got a late start, I'm going to move somewhat quickly because obviously we want to get to public comment. We want to get to comment of the board members as well. See, the problem is, is this is not my computer. It's not scrolling.
Your problem?
Yeah, I'm trying now.
It's also that protected mode, which makes it hard.
Yeah, I'm wondering about that as well.
Yeah, get rid of that. You should enable it.
There we go. Thank you.
Now you can just share.
Yep, I know. Yep. Okay, so obviously, this is the cover. It does contain, and you'll see this on the contents page, it does contain photos of existing affordable housing in town, Lexington Gardens, Woods Edge, Summerdale, Temple Pines, Village on State, Parkside, Stevens Wood, and Carmen Romano Apartments. The first page is just an introductory letter. That's going to be slightly revised in the final draft. We'll obviously get rid of that first sentence just indicating that this is a revised draft of the 2022-27 Affordable Housing Plan for North Haven. It just explains, again, pursuant to 830-J of the Connecticut general statutes, all Connecticut municipalities are required to prepare and adopt an Affordable Housing Plan. The plan does need to be updated at least once every five years. And the statute requires that the plan, and this is important, specify how the municipality intends to increase the number of affordable housing developments in the municipality. There's a statement of community values. And I think the important thing about the statement of community values is it does indicate, you know, there are a number of things that do make a North Haven affordable in terms of the services that are provided by the town, which in other communities, and I just point this out, which in other communities residents do have to pay for. So there is a box at the bottom of that page that contains the community value statement that indicates, and this is important because it gives you the definition of affordable housing. Our Affordable Housing statute is 8-30-G, and it says the following. "In Connecticut communities having less than 10% of their housing stock, meeting state criteria," and again, this is the criteria of what we consider to be affordable. "Assisted housing, deed-restricted housing, rental assistance units, and then CHFA, USDA mortgages, are subject to the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure, where qualifying developments do not have to strictly comply with local zoning regulations." So developments would not be approved if they posed a substantial threat to public health or safety, but there is a burden that the local agencies do need to meet. And just generally, when we're talking about affordable housing, what is affordable? It's housing that is available for sale or rent at which folks earning 80% of median income are not spending more than 30% of what they earn on housing. So I hope I explained that. I know there's some confusion because it's a bit of a complicated definition, right? I hope I explained that clearly for you. So the plan obviously goes into, you know, why do we plan for housing? And what type of housing is it important to plan for? We talk about a diversity of housing stock, and that was something, you know, that was looked at in development of the plan. It's something that's going to be looked at going forward in execution of the plan. And I'll say a little bit more about that when we get to the strategies. So at the present time, that box at the bottom of page one, the need for affordable housing is the main reason why North Haven is preparing this housing plan. And there's a definition of what is affordable housing. I do want to point out that as far as 830-G is concerned, the median income that is applicable, because the statute reads, it says, the applicable median income is either the area median income or the state median income, whichever is less, it's the area median income that controls in North Haven's case. Is there a need? This is a great graphic, so I want to make sure everybody takes a look at this. So is there a need for affordable housing in North Haven? So it says, as indicated, there are many measures for determining the needs for affordable housing in a town and in North Haven. So one way is an affordability gap analysis, which compares the number of households in different income cohorts to the number of units affordably priced to them. In this way, it can be estimated whether shortage or surplus exists. In North Haven, data that was received through the COGS consultant, RKG Associates, they did a study. They found that there is a shortage of over 1,000 housing units to meet the needs of low and moderate income households in North Haven. So you can look at that graphic to get a sense. There are about 55 rental units in North Haven affordable at 50% of AMI and below. And then it indicates, if 10 of those rental units are occupied by people earning higher incomes, that leaves only 45 rental units to meet the need or demand. So some of these facts, they're very interesting in terms of providing you, again, with the information that's needed to understand really what the need is. And this is all part of the housing need, or the housing needs assessment portion of our plan. So I encourage you to take a look at that. So how many afforded, this is another component of it, how many affordable housing units does North Haven currently have? Now, this is based on, every year, the state, the Department of Housing publishes the Affordable Housing Appeals list, and it provides the reporting by town of the types of affordable housing that each town has. So that qualifies as affordable housing pursuant to the statute. So currently, pursuant to the 2021, it's actually technically the 2021 list because the 2022 list will not come out until March or April of this year. The number of assisted housing units that you have, which are housing, which receive financial assistance under any governmental program for the construction or substantial rehabilitation of low and moderate income housing, you have 393 of those units. You have 23 units which are deed-restricted housing units. So those are under our law. Those are dwelling units which are deed-restricted to sell or rent at prices that are affordable. Again, 30% or less of annual income is being spent on housing, again, to eligible persons and families. So there's an actual deed restriction that is recorded with that housing on the land records. And the statute provides for a certain period of years for sale and rental. It's different because they just actually amended the statute. But I'm not going to cover all of these details. There's information within the plan that is significant to your understanding, but certainly, I can't provide you with the entire overview this evening in the content of this meeting. So I do encourage you to take a look at all of it because it is important to understanding the full picture. So rental assisted households, there's 51 units. Rental assistance is a government program where low-income families find decent, safe, and sanitary housing in the private market. And then the government pays the difference between the 30% of the family's income and the rental price. And then lastly, we've got this category of CHFA, USDA mortgage households. Houses which purchase homes using CHFA or USDA mortgages are also counted to the Affordable Housing Appeals list. So that's 85 units, again, on CHFA/USDA. So your current housing strategies, you could take a look at that on your own. But so your current affordable housing strategies are contained in the 2017 to 2027 Plan of Conservation and Development, referred to as the P-O-C-D. And there is listed there some of the strategies that are relevant to the Affordable Housing Plan that are contained in the P-O-C-D. Now we're really getting to the meat of the plan. Okay, so to your housing goals and your housing strategies. So for goals, there's been identified four goals. To preserve and maintain the town's existing affordable housing stock. To encourage development of affordable housing in areas of the town that are along transit routes and are proximate to services. To address housing gaps by providing housing options for all types of households, including seniors, empty nesters, families, young families, singles, et cetera. So affordable homeownership options and rental options. And then finally, to promote resident education, communication, and discussion about the town's current critical housing needs, what affordable housing is, and how best to implement the Affordable Housing Plan. And I'm going to say something about that when we reach that, how important that actually is to provide education. So let's look at the strategies in the context of these goals. So our first strategy here, establishing municipal approaches for affordable housing. Establish an organizational capacity to address affordable housing. And what we've done with the strategies in the plan, and this is, there was an initial draft that RKG had prepared. What's different from that initial draft to this that you're seeing here is that the strategy is identified, a description of the strategy is provided, and then the leader on that strategy, the agency of the town that is going to be charged with execution of it or oversight of execution of it is identified. And that's very important because as we go along during the next five years that this plan is applicable to, in order to evaluate whether you're gaining any headway, you know, there's going to be some oversight given to see, you know, are these strategies being complied with by these various agencies? And if they aren't, well, what are the reasons why? Is it not a working strategy? So that's all going to have to be evaluated. So in terms of establishing an organizational entity, 1.1.1, you'll see the strategy there. Establish a permanent Affordable Housing Commission or Committee. Obviously, the Board of Selectmen will decide whether or not that should occur. And then 1.1.2, establishing staff capacity to implement housing strategies. We've got to make sure, you know, that staff, because this is, this is... Just let you go. Obviously, the execution of the plan, again, is going to take some oversight, some input by staff. They're going to have a very important role. So that will also fall to the Board of Selectmen. So another strategy that's been identified, and again, under the main of establishing municipal approaches for affordable housing, is establishing a housing trust fund to enhance financial capacity. So a housing trust fund, you'll see in the description there. A housing trust fund is a special municipal account, which is a repository for money which can be used to support affordable housing efforts. It's created and administered at the local level, and the entity administering the fund would define priorities and eligible activities money in the fund could be used for. So examples of funding areas might include emergency rental assistance, down payment and closing assistance, gap financing for new construction of affordable units, repairs and rehabilitation of bolder affordable homes and units, something that's very important there, and then foreclosure prevention. And then the leader on this strategy would of course be the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. And then we see below that an additional sub-strategy, if you will, to seek ways to fund a housing trust fund. So the ways that are identified are through grants, through donations, gifts, input quests, municipal contributions, land use permitting fees, and then the Community Reinvestment Act obligations. The next strategy, I'm sorry. I just screwed it down a little too fast there. Establishing standard procedures for deed-restricted units. So adopting standard documents for deed restrictions. So that would result in certain parameters being followed when you standardize the documents that are being used. So having a draft required standard affordability plan. Affordability plan is required under 830-G. That includes a requirement for annual reporting by an approved administrator of the plan. A fair housing marketing plan. How are the affordable housing units being marketed? So having a document that defines what is happening in terms of the marketing of those units is very important. And then the affordability deed restrictions, including protection against, foreclosing out affordability restrictions. So that's something that the Affordable Housing Committee or Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission and Town Staff would be instrumental in executing. And then requiring, I'll just put my cursor over here. Requiring town approval of the Affordable Housing Plan Administrator. So this is important. So one of the things, and this is something that you'll hear at the local level with regard to submission of the affordability plans, the plans identify an administrator of the plan. And sometimes that administrator is not a third party, but somebody associated with the developer. And what we found in the municipalities, I do work with other towns as well, is that those reports on affordability, that the units are being maintained as affordable and so forth, are not being submitted during the timeframe that they should be. So that's an issue that we hear a lot when we're having discussions at the municipal level. So one of the ways to address that is potentially that you require a third-party administrator and, and Housing Authority is mentioned here, another qualified entity. But you can also require that there's a municipal approval of that administrator of deed-restricted developments to ensure that the administrator is somebody that's qualified. You know, there are some circumstances where there are affordability plans. And this hasn't been North Haven's experience, but I have heard of this, where maybe somebody identifies, you know, a developer identifies an office person who's, you know, the administrator of the affordability plan. And that's really not ideal because they don't have the experience, they don't understand eligibility requirements and so on and so forth. So, you know, we want to make sure that these plans are being complied with as far as the marketing is concerned. We want to make sure that the units, that the people that need the affordable units are the ones who are in the affordable units, of course. So that all plays into that. So that's why we have that strategy. And then at points, Glenn did add some possible future considerations. I'm not going to go through those. I do encourage you to take a look because it's some things that were considered but maybe not included because they were appropriate for your first five years. You know, there's other basic things, foundational things that really you should be doing before you embark on some of these other potential options as far as strategies are concerned. So let's talk about preserving and maintaining existing affordable units. This is such an important goal, okay? Because, you know, municipalities, from year to year, they may lose affordable units from that Affordable Housing Appeals list. So because folks may no longer be eligible. You know, if they're getting a voucher, they may move to a different town. And so they're no longer using that voucher, and the town's not getting credit for that government-assisted unit. So let's take a look at the strategies. Work with owners to preserve existing assisted housing units. So, and I'm going to read this description because it, again, it's an important consideration. Since it will be easier to preserve existing affordable housing units, such as assisted housing, than to build new such units, it is very important that North Haven maintain the units it has. While housing authority units and nonprofit units are generally retained over time, for-profit owners may seek to convert assisted units to market rate units when the financing or deed restrictions expire. So again, important consideration, right? We want to make sure that we're maintaining the existing units. Expanding and modernizing the housing authority units. So work with, and this is the second strategy, sub-strategy there. Work with the North Haven Housing Authority to investigate how existing sites could support additional units and/or transform them into mixed-income communities or modern affordable housing developments. This could include units for seniors and disabled persons and families. And then lastly, continue to use CDBG funding to maintain existing, oh, there's a typo there. There's always a typo, folks. I'll correct that before we submit. To maintain existing affordable units. Continue to seek community development block grant. Again, that's CDBG, if folks don't know. Funding to improve the quality of existing affordable housing units, public and private, to serve the needs of residents. And it goes on. Seek to preserve, maintain, existing naturally occurring affordable units called, and we use the acronym of NOAA, which has particular meaning to North Haven, right? But naturally occurring affordable units, every town has them. So this strategy is going to seek to try to figure out where are your naturally occurring units that you may occurring units that you may not be getting credit for? And what could you do to get credit for those units? You know, it may be incentivizing to deed restrict, right? So some, some tax incentive. So investigate ways to deed restrict existing naturally occurring affordable housing, NOAA units through tax incentives, cooperative purchase, financial payment and/or other means. So this can be important since conversion of naturally occurring affordable units into market rate units such fixer-uppers, et cetera, will reduce the amount of affordable housing in North Haven. Okay? So we want to look at what can we do with what we have, okay? Um, next, uh, goal, increase the number of new affordable units. So let's talk about these strategies. 3.1, encouraging affordable housing development in locations supported by the community. So now we're getting into, um, the locational analysis piece, the land use assessment piece, um, of, of this. So identify and promote locations for housing and consider, consider the description there is to consider zoning changes, incentives, and infrastructure that may be needed to encourage housing development along transit and commercial areas. Are locations suitable within the constraints of existing infrastructure? So there is a map on the next page, and I'm going to scroll down, and we're going to talk about the areas that were identified by the committee, by areas, areas, or as areas rather, to focus on. Um, and again, think about those bullets. Along transit in commercial areas or locations suitable within the constraints of existing infrastructure. And I'm just going to say, um, something that's very important here, and, and it's addressed in the bullet. One of the things that we found, because when you look at housing, you got to look at the, the whole piece, right, of, of, of somebody's condition, of why they need affordable housing. It's not just that they need affordable housing, but oftentimes they need availability of transit because they don't have a means of getting around, they need to be close to services, okay? Whether it's medical services, they, they, they may need childcare, that's a big issue, okay? Is affordable childcare and accessibility of child, childcare when you don't have means. And, and then, you know, in terms of having accessibility to your, sort of your typical neighborhood stores, you know, food stability is an issue, right? Access to food, um, and community services. And many times, and, and I said, I was going to actually address this at the end, and I hope I'm, I'm not talking too, too fast because I'm trying to get through. But, um, one of the things, uh, so many times what I've, because I, I do your blight enforcement, um, so I help the town in other ways, um, one of the things that I've learned is oftentimes people in need, they don't know about the community services that are available. So if you're, if you're locating people in affordable housing that's proximate to services, you're giving them a better shot to be successful. You know, to come over to community services and get help, fuel assistance help or get food, okay? And all of those things that so many of us, we don't have to worry about. So it's important to think about this when we're talking about location. So, um, the bullets, the second group of bullets there, um, these six areas we're identifying using considerations such as availability of utilities and transportation infrastructure, areas that are walkable, near commercial or retail space, close to jobs, um, areas identified in prior planning efforts, so your P O C Ds, and then input from community planning staff, boards, commissions, and committees, elected leaders, and residents. Um, we had, we did these community outreach meetings. We had some great people, um, contribute. We had somebody, I thought, I thought one person, many, but there was a, um, a woman from Gateway, um, who was terrific, and she talked about, um, you, you know, what she's experienced, and, and I don't know Rodderville, maybe when I'm done, maybe you want to comment about some of that, but just some of what we've learned from, from leaders within your community about need amongst the segments of people that they work with. Um, it was, uh, somebody from the App Foundation, uh, she was also terrific in terms of really educating us about a segment of need. So let's talk about the six areas. We've got the town center area, uh, Route 5 commercial area, North Washington area, State Street, Old Broadway, and Universal Drive. So the town center, again, going back to what I said. So North Haven's town center offers opportunities for housing in mixed-use buildings or in well-designed structures for those who want to live in a downtown setting. Um, the area provides walkability, access to transit, access to retail and restaurants, town services, and open space. Development here will also support local businesses, right? So that's important because you want to have a vibrant town center, obviously. Um, Route 5 commercial area, the area along Route 5 between the town center and I-91 could offer opportunities for housing in mixed-use buildings. So reusing or repositioning of commercial properties, um, that may be vacant in whole or in part, um, or in well-designed structures through redevelopment or addition of housing on parking lots. Um, North Washington area, so beyond, uh, the 91 overpass there. The area along Washington Avenue immediately north of 91 could, could also offer opportunities for housing in mixed-use buildings, again, reuse and repositioning of commercial properties or in well-designed structures through redevelopment or the repurposing of existing parking lots for housing. Uh, State Street, this area is being discussed as a potential location for a rail transit station in North Haven. Um, if the station is constructed, the town could consider allowing housing in this location to provide people with the opportunity to live near public transit. Um, so obviously that will increase job opportunities and so forth. So Old Broadway, this mixed-use area along State Street and Old Broadway could offer opportunities for housing in mixed-use buildings or in well-designed structures. Um, and then Universal Drive, um, the same, is, it's another area where there's opportunities for housing in mixed-use buildings or in well-designed structures, and this area is served by transit and obviously, as everybody knows, um, has excellent highway access, which is also very beneficial. So there's the locational map, identifies those areas. And then, um, we have, uh, another strategy with this goal to consider potential amendment of the zoning regulations to help create more units. So the first sub-strategy there is to review existing zoning regulations. Um, so review existing zoning districts and regulations to contemplate ways to increase the opportunities available for affordable housing production such as use restrictions, dimensional requirements, open space requirements, maximum height restrictions, minimum lot area requirements, maximum density units per acre or minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirements, and also minimum parking requirements. Now, this is just a sampling of things that, you know, we would be looking at. Um, there's, obviously, there's other aspects of the zoning regulations that would be under consideration, and, um, I have amassed, you know, there, there's all types of, um, regulations out there that encourage affordable housing. Um, so, uh, Town Staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission would, would have the benefit of, um, you know, other, uh, strategies as far as regulatory changes, um, that have assisted other towns, both within Connecticut and outside of Connecticut, um, in establishing more affordable housing. So create new opportunities in the zoning regulations. So look for opportunities to create flexible zoning regulations for the areas where the municipality wants to encourage housing production. Um, if affordable housing units are provided, the regulations could allow multifamily housing topologies on smaller parcels in appropriate areas. And this could include miss, missing middle housing and/or co, co-housing developments with shared amenities. Um, one of the other things too, um, some of you may be aware, if, if you come to the Board of Select meetings, if you're town planning and zoning, um, we're going to also be looking at the issue of accessory apartments. Um, so currently, there are, it, it, and, and it's, it gets a little bit technical, but, um, North Haven does allow, um, in-laws as additions, okay? Um, and, uh, I don't, I don't want to get too much into the specifics of that, but, um, so we would be looking at, there was a, a statute that was passed, um, that allowed a single, folks who had a single-family structure to have as of right an attached, detached, or on the same footprint accessory apartment. And both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Selectmen did choose to opt out, um, of that statute, as did the majority of the municipalities in the state, um, to my knowledge, um, so that they could craft their own regulations. So that's something else in terms of housing stock and opportunity the Planning and Zoning Commission will be looking at. Um, and then lastly, adopting inclusionary zoning provisions and zoning regulations to encourage or require that below-market housing units be provided in new developments. So, um, you, you may establish in your zoning regulations that for every multifamily residential, and this is what it indicates, um, every multifamily residential development that's proposed must include a particular set aside of affordable. So whether that's 10%, 15%, 20%. Um, and, you know, it could be different things in different areas. Um, it doesn't have to be the same for every district. Um, so all of that, uh, will be undertaken, uh, by Planning and Zoning with support, of course, by its very capable staff and, um, input from the Affordable Housing Committee or Commission if it's established. So those three things, reviewing regulations, creating opportunities, and adopting inclusionary zoning, um, Planning and Zoning Commission will be working on. So increasing the number of other types, we're almost done with my comments. Increasing the number of other types of affordable housing units, um, being supportive of other developments of assisted housing, supporting not, nonprofits such as the North Haven Interfaith Housing, and private developers seeking to establish assisted housing in appropriate locations in North Haven, um, seeking to attract purchasers using CHFA and USDA mortgages. The state is doing some things with regard to that at the state level. Investigate ways to attract buyers receiving CHFA and USDA mortgages to North Haven since such units count to affordable housing appeals list. Um, maybe you want to offer, uh, closing cost assistance, down payment assistance, um, cooperative ownership, ed, and also there's an educational piece, education of realtors, lenders, et cetera, and education or counseling of purchasers on available options. Um, seeking to attract tenants with rental assistance. Investigate ways to attract tenant-based rental certificate recipients to North Haven sets, such, since such units, of course, count, um, towards the Affordable Housing Appeals list. And then there's another, uh, uh, possible future considerations box down there. Complementary strategies. Number four. Coordinate the P O C D and the Affordable Housing Plan as new plans are prepared in the future. Of course, we don't want the P O C D to say something different than your Affordable Housing Plan. So there needs to be a coordination between the two going forward now that you're required to have both the P O C D by law and the separate Affordable Housing Plan. Um, encourage, promote, require appropriate design. Um, establish design guidelines, um, and this is something that we talked about a bit. Um, consider ways to establish, strengthen design guidelines or requirements, including, um, those for affordable housing developments, written guidelines, graphic guidelines. Uh, there's going to be a state pattern book, um, that's being worked on. I was hoping that it would be completed last year, but they're saying we're going to have it this year. Um, so that'll be something we'll put up on our Affordable Housing page on, on, on the town website, so people could take a look at that once it's passed. Um, and then coordinate guidelines and requirements with code requirements. Um, so one of the things that we talked about some, um, during the course of our meetings was universal design requirements to make, um, to make units accessible, um, you know, that's another consideration with this, very important, um, consideration. Um, provide support, education about affordable housing. Again, can't, can't emphasize enough the importance of preparing, delivering educational information, informational programs regarding affordable housing. When people are in need, they need to know where to find the resources. That's one of the easiest ways to help people, is to have the information accessible, to have programs available to educate people. So promoting community awareness, um, and understanding of affordable housing by preparing and delivering educational materials and programs on what affordable housing is, the housing needs in North Haven, the benefits of providing housing at all price points in the community, housing as a form of economic development, and how the two support each other, and then approaches, of course, being implemented in the town. So it's not just about to, I want to, because the way I said, it's not just about educating the people in need, but educating the people that are not in need to help the people in need, okay? Um, because we all, of course, want to do that. Participate in regional education efforts. So the COG, um, the COG has been running these great, through their housing working group, some of these great, um, webinars, um, and, uh, I know and other people have been, been listening in about, uh, you know, sort of where's everything going from, from, um, the regional standpoint as well, but just trying to put people together, um, to support the efforts, um, to create more affordable housing in, in, in all the towns in the state. So, um, working with SCROG and other regional entities to promote greater awareness of housing issues, including private landlords, understanding of rental assistant vouchers. Um, we have that in there because there are a lot of people that really don't understand, like people say Section 8, Section 8, Section 8. Section 8 is a voucher. It enables people to get very, very nice housing. Um, and we've got it, we've got to get rid of, um, some of the misinformation about, um, rental assistance and so forth. Um, and then, uh, providing support, complementary municipal programs, continue to provide programs that support people and households. Um, so we've got under there, you see that first bullet, maintain, enhance the elderly tax relief, we've got the elderly tax program. Uh, provide social services for people who need them. I mentioned, um, food assistance, but also there's elderly transportation, there's counseling. So many people don't know that there's counseling services available to them. Important for people to know. Investigate ways to enhance programs which support people and households. Um, this could, for example, include helping support people aging in place with home maintenance, home improvements, um, another important piece. And then that, we've got the supporting of the regional partnering efforts, I'm not going to move through all the specifics, and then implementing other actions there. Um, and in 4.6.2, I mentioned universal design, um, in housing, that's where that is in this plan. Encourage or acquire universal side features being incorporated, new multifamily housing units, zero threshold doors, lever handles. Um, this not only serves the senior population, but any resident with a disability, so, so important. Um, possible future considerations, there's workforce housing there, there's how, how, so more specific housing counseling. And then we have a great appendix, um, that gives you, so what are the numbers? You know, what does it really mean to be affordable? So look at that metrics of affordable housing in North Haven in 2022. It gives you a sense, right? Um, as far as the ret, the rental numbers, the sales price in num, numbers based upon, um, you know, the, the size of the household, so studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, four. Um, so that's a, that's a great informational piece. Um, we've got, again, the Affordable Housing Inventory, that appears earlier, again, 552 units out of 9,491. We're still using the 2010 census numbers because the 20, 20 census numbers haven't been released. We're hoping this year that that's going to happen, but, you know, they may be a little stale, but North Haven's at 5.82% of the 10% threshold. And it gives the breakdown again of all those units and where they're, it gives you an indication to, I kind of scrolled by that quickly, but where those units are, right? The Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure, again, if you want to have an understanding of that, um, housing affordability over time, this is sort of an interesting one because it, it really points to the, to what the problem is, is that, that we, we've got a situation, it says at the end, over the last 20 years, the way, ratio has, so the ratio of median house prices to median incomes, okay? How it's grown higher over time. Says, over the last 20 years, the ratio has fluctuated with housing being particularly unaffordable during the subprime mortgage crisis, we all remember that, and now with the recent COVID bump in housing prices. So that's a good graphic of what, you know, we're really facing as far as affordability is concerned. We're way behind in housing production. So the underproduction of housing in recent years, there's a good graphic right there. Um, after the sub- After the subprime mortgage crisis in 2006 or so, housing production dropped significantly and stayed below the historic average for 12-plus years. During this 149-month period of underproduction, about housing units were not produced compared to historical averages, and this 6-million-unit shortfall resulted in housing shortages and housing price spike. So there's great information in the index, or the appendix, rather. Don't pass by it if you're interested in this, make sure you do review it. There's also some general terms that Glenn did a good job of defining for you. So I am done at 7:38, and I plan on not talking, not a bit more. Because we want to hear from you. That's why we have a public hearing. The board wants to hear what you have to say.
Yes, so let me jump in here. And why don't we start with those who are on our Zoom meeting? Are there any questions or comments that anyone may have?
Yes, I am. Hello, this is Joe DiMartino.
Yes, go right ahead, Joe.
Okay. I want to congratulate the committee for getting this plan done. By state law, we needed a plan. So apparently we're in compliance with at least having a plan. You can bet there's plenty of other towns and cities that aren't going to submit it in a timely manner. However, D-Plan has several issues. And I'm going to go through them. Some of these suggestions for changes are things that we have fought for years at planning and zoning. There's a reason why people move to North Haven, and it's because we are different than all the other Havens. We don't have multiple-family housing. We don't have rental assistance apartments. So unless we make some changes in this plan, I don't know if it's going to completely stop the ball that's rolling on this affordable housing in Hartford. But I'm going to go through some of these issues that I've found. Like, for instance, restricted on page two. What is affordable housing? The two, restricted to sell or rent at prices affordable to such households, 30% or less of the income threshold. Now Attorney Capola said there's misinformation about Section 8. Well, there's no misinformation, Attorney Capola. I was an adult probation officer for 24 years. I've been in every housing project in Bridgeport, in New Haven, Meriden, and Middletown. So I've seen what these types of places do. And we don't want Section 8 subsidized housing. Otherwise, we're going to turn into all these other towns. That's what 30% or less of the income threshold, that's what they pay when you have a Section 8 voucher, that's what you pay, you pay 30% less. I'm also a former landlord, and I once rented to a Section 8 tenant. And that didn't work out too good. Now, if you go to page seven. Page seven, seek ways to fund the Housing Trust Fund, municipal contributions, land use permitting fees. So it appears to me like we would contribute to our own demise. You go to page 10. 3-11, consider zoning changes, incentives, and infrastructure that may be needed. Zoning changes? Well, not long ago, we fought the zoning change that a developer sought for 102 Middletown. He wanted to put numerous apartments on top of a commercial place at the intersection of Middletown and Quinipiac. Planning and zoning turned that down five to nothing because numerous people turned out from Monroe's to fight that one. But now the plan wants us to consider changing zoning to allow more affordable housing. Okay, now we go down to the bottom of page 10, Universal Drive. Now I can't help but notice that the circled area for Universal Drive has the biggest footprint for affordable housing. And as I understand it, you're looking to put, you're looking to do exactly what was turned down at 102 Middletown Avenue by putting affordable housing on top of commercial structures as one of the components of this. And yet, we've already rejected this. Now, page 12, review existing zoning regulations. Maximum density, minimum parking requirements. That's another thing that planning and zoning usually emphasizes is they want the developers to comply with minimum parking requirements. And yet, this plan is recommending that we do away with minimum parking requirements? Page 13, seek to attract tenants with rental assistance. All right, I think I already addressed that. Oh, page 14, participate in regional education efforts on affordable housing. Well, up in Hartford, they want to eliminate the planning and zoning powers by having a regional planning and zoning. That, what does that actually mean? It means New Haven, they would want New Haven a housing authority controlling all the other towns' housing authorities, including ours. Now, regionalization, I hope you read today's paper. The state Senator Martin Looney now wants to cut off any school construction reimbursement to towns under 25,000 if we don't join regional education. Talk about shoving stuff down the suburbs throats, once again. Page 15, continue to promote regional solutions. All right, I just addressed that. So. And so I think that even though we need a plan, that this plan has some serious defects in it, and it just does not fit our history of opposing many of these suggestions. Thank you.
Would anyone else on Zoom like to offer some comments?
This is Rod Williams. I just wanted to say a couple things. It was a privileged to serve on this commission. And one of the things that I learned in doing this was that this is a very difficult issue. It's a tough thing that every municipality in the state has to face. And there, I don't know that there are any easy solutions, but I think that what we attempted to provide for the board here was a number of options. You know, it does say at one place at the beginning of this that a lot of these are aspirational, and we look to the board to distill these and, you know, figure out which direction to go. But it's a great challenge, and it's something that's going to be something that we have to face for a number of years. And so hopefully, what this does is it allows, it creates a framework upon which to build. And if all these ideas don't fit, that's okay. But there are a number of options, and so I think that it's a great place to start, and I'm really happy with the work we did. And I want to thank the board for considering this, it's very important. So thanks, that's all I have to say. Thanks for taking this up.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
Can I get back in, please?
Yes.
All right, I'd also like to say that a lot of the housing advocates like to say that multiple-family housing does not produce crime. Well, I don't think that they spent 24 years in my type of job. And just in today, just in today's news, there was a purse-snatching robbery, girl thrown on the ground in North Haven. Where did the cops chase them back to? Well, and it looks like they did a great job catching them. They chased them to Exit 6 in New Haven, which is the Willow Street exit. And what's off the Willow Street exit if you take a left? Well, it's Fairhaven, and it's multiple-family housing. So it's no myth that multiple-family housing does produce a lot of these people that are coming into our town and committing a lot of crime. Thank you.
Can I make a clarification? I think, Jen, at the very beginning of your presentation regarding page two, which has the definition of affordable housing, I think we need to just be really clear on that. It's targeted for households with 80%, which is four-fifths of the median income. And we've talked about this before, it's really designed for working families and single professionals, people starting out, 80% of the median income. The 30%, the second part of the definition, or the 30% that we heard Mr. DiMartino mention, that means that the total that they're paying, whether it's the monthly rent or their mortgage payment, if it's a single-family home, cannot be more than 30% of their income.
That's right.
Meaning they want you to have 70% of your income for things like food and healthcare, childcare, car insurance, gas. So I think it's really important to have explained that 80%, 30% a little clearer. You're, affordable housing is for people making 80% of the median income. That's not low income, that's moderate income. The 30% is not an income threshold, it is a cost threshold. Is that correct, Attorney Capola?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Doesn't that, I think it's really important. And when you started your presentation and you went through that, I know you were trying to go through quickly, but I kind of wanted to stop you then and say, wait, slow down with those two percentages. And I just think it's very important to clarify that again about the income at 80% and the cost of housing, whether it's monthly rent for an apartment or
That's the mortgage.
Mortgage. I had a question about the 30% for a single-family home. Because, you know, I do a lot of real estate closings, and I always talk to my clients about their out-the-door monthly, and it's principal and income, excuse me, principal and interest on the mortgage, then you've got your taxes and your insurance. So for the household, for the single-family home portion of that determination, not the rent for an apartment, is it all three of those for the 30% or just the P and I?
So if you look at, again, the information is in the appendix.
Ah. I want you to tell me. I don't want to find out.
But I just want to point out, on page 16, the metrics of affordable housing in North Haven, we included that information so you could actually see the numbers. You know, what is 80% of AMI for one person?
Somebody making 55,000.
It's almost $56,000.
Yeah, 55,830.
For two people, it's almost 64.
Yeah.
But for your, you know, your four-person household, it's almost $80,000. So it's not low income by any means.
That's what I'm trying to make everyone understand. That's why I think page two is essential to understand.
I want to make a comment about the Section 8.
Sure.
Nobody has any idea where those vouchers are being used, and I'm telling you, you would be surprised. The type of housing that Section 8 vouches, I mean, I think we have this preconceived, again, this notion that, you know, it slums. It's not, that's not a real thing. It just isn't. Because, you know, I've been involved in, again, the responding to the eligibility inquiry from the state on that. And so I know, you know, for one, and that's from one town in particular, I know where the housing vouchers are being used. And it's really a misconception.
Now, this is a public hearing, but I really thought it was important, and thank you for allowing me to clarify, not clarify, but to to emphasize the definition of affordable housing, because there's great misconception. But we should now ask for other, this is a public hearing, the public should be speaking.
So thank you for that.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, Jen, thank you for that. So we've heard from Mr. Williams, Mr. DiMartino, anyone else on Zoom?
I would just like to say that I appreciate the efforts in expanding our affordable housing in North Haven. I don't have the document in front of me. Could we clarify exactly again what the area median income is?
Yes, Elizabeth, we'll do that.
So the area median income for the New Haven, Meriden area is currently $99,700. So, and that's based on, and that's based on a household of four people.
Okay, so that's for four people. So we're saying, okay, 80% of that, right? So that just brings it down to around?
It's about 80, it's $79,760.
Right, right. So to reemphasize, we're not talking about really low income, we're talking about more like a moderate or, you know, low moderate for the housing. And I think that this is just a really important issue because it gets to the point where, you know, North Haven may be out of touch with the needs of the community, and to expand housing for people to be able to afford it, I think this is an important issue we have to take on. Like was said earlier, maybe this is just a starting point for the plan, but this isn't going to go away. And so we have to come up with something to make the community a little more accessible for the people who want to be here. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Would anyone else on Zoom like to offer any comments?
Can I say something else?
Go ahead, Mr. DiMartino.
All right, I'd just like to clarify on the Section 8, what I believe that if you have a Section 8 voucher and if it's pay one-third of the rent, the other part is subsidized by, the two-thirds are subsidized by the government. So that's how the Section 8 works now. There's no misrepresentation. Now, our town attorney, what, I think, from Guilford, how do you know about Section 8?
Oh, Mr. DiMartino. Well, I always love to hear your comments. We're not going to talk about where Attorney Capola lives tonight, because I did live, in fact, 10 years in North Haven. And unfortunately, we did not find a house in North Haven at the time that we were looking. That's how we ended up where we are. But I don't, that does not have anything to do with my point about Section 8, is that there's a misconception about what type of housing the property, you know, the vouchers are being used for. That was my point.
Right, I think the bottom line is it's subsidized, it's subsidized housing. Affordable housing like we have at Somerdale, that's worth, that's worth fine. But what they, landlords get two-thirds of that rent even if the tenant decides not to pay. So some landlords are tempted to take tenants like that because they have that subsidy. And these are not working people that own affordable housing like Somerdale. Most of them are on temporary assistance to families in need, formerly known as aid to families with dependent children. It's welfare.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom before we move to the people in our audience? All right, let's open it up here to those in our audience. Would anyone like to comment? Yes, Mrs. Caldwell.
I have a couple of questions. I just want to get a clarification on
I just want to get a clarification on the, you know, this complicated definition with percentage of income and that kind of thing. So does the, in order for something to be considered affordable housing, are you actually looking at the income of the person who bought it? Or is it based off a formula and then these numbers that are on page 16 say, okay, if you have a four-bedroom house, this is the mortgage or the rent that qualifies it? And you're not necessarily looking at the income of the individual who's living there?
So there's a whole formula. It's very complicated. And it does appear in some of the affordability plans. I could provide you additional information with regard to that. But it's, yeah, it's hard to explain it.
But I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is it a number based on?
Not just one individual, it's the household.
Right, but it's actually based on who's purchasing or renting the house, is what I'm asking?
No, that's not, that's not true. It's everybody that's residing in the home.
I understand that, but that's what I'm talking, I guess that's my question. So is it specific to the actual income and people in the home? Or is it, you know, a four-bedroom house rents for $2,000 a month? And that is what gives you the affordability? Or is it, are you actually calculating it for the specific people who either purchase or live in the home? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, I mean, I believe that it's the latter based upon what I've reviewed.
Okay, all right.
And I don't know if Ben, if you have any additional, because when I've looked at the eligibility, I mean, there's a whole formula that typically appears in, you know, when it's an 830G application and we're requiring, obviously, affordability plan pursuant to the statute. There's a whole section of the affordability plan that gives how eligibility is calculated. Yeah, so it's the latter is my understanding of it.
Sure, and I want to preface this. I do housing organizing in a lot of towns. I'm not a policy expert, so I'm going to speak to the extent of my understanding. Because I think what I hear you asking is, it's not like Section 8 where depending on your income, you pay more or less for the house, right? This is a matter of having a certain amount of housing that is affordable, where the rent and the mortgage is at a certain level so that somebody making 80% of the median income of the town can pay to live there and pay no more than 30% of their income on the rent or the mortgage. And so there's vetting in terms of, since it's deed restricted, you want to make sure, as Attorney Capola was saying, that people living in those places are the people that actually need it. But it's not like we are, it's not like the rent and the mortgage fluctuate based on who's living there.
Okay, that is a little what I'm asking, but it sounds like it is also based on a qualification. So my second question about it.
And I think that's some yes, some no. I think different towns, that's in the plan is to have that. In terms of statute 830G, that's not required. It's about just having a certain amount of affordable housing in the town.
Okay, so in the statute, it's basically, here's what we would consider affordable. And if you have that, then you would meet that qualification. You're not going to necessarily look at each individual income and then?
That is, to my knowledge, correct what you're saying.
And then the other question I had, the deed restriction, does all affordable housing have to be deed restricted? No? Okay, so.
No, that's just one, that's just one option of being able to get credit, again, towards the 10% threshold.
Very few are.
And there are very few are.
Only 23 out of our 550.
It's Lexington Gardens. Because Lexington Gardens, I think it is, that's all it is. Because it may be one unit. Because Lexington Gardens was an 830G application. So they needed to comply with the deed restriction requirement of 830J.
Okay.
Most of our assisted living, sorry, Jen.
No, go ahead.
Most of our assisted, our affordable housing units are assisted housing units. Like.
That get government assistance, that get government assistance.
Temple Pines or Park Manor, Parkside, Carbon Romano, right?
Yeah, it appears twice in the plan. It's in, it actually lists.
Well, we're going to page four and then.
Yeah, and the appendix at 17, it gives you the breakdown of the government assistance.
Yeah.
Amongst the, the Parkside's got 40 and Temple Pines has 30 units.
Stevens Woods is on there.
Stevens Woods, yeah. Yeah, Stevens Woods has 60.
60.
Yeah. Can I interject for a moment? Because I might be able to help with this answer. In terms of the deed restriction, like you said, Parkside, Temple Pines, those are funded through the government, through DOH. And those are, that's the reason why they're assisted and that's why they're on the list, as well as Stevens Woods and Woods Edge. And those were through HUD 505 program. So that's assisted and that's why they're on the list. In terms of deed restricted, not only is it Lexington Gardens, but the Village on State should have six deed restricted units because they gave us six affordable units. And the ones on Washington Avenue, where the 20% of the units that are being built on the western side, those should be deed restricted as well. That's how you maintain those units as affordable. And that goes to addressing part of the other strategies in the plan in terms of how do we keep those units that are now affordable? How do we keep them and that they don't fall off?
Yeah, I mean, deed.
Does that help at all?
Deed restriction is ideal.
That is ideal. And that's what you would strive for with those types of projects, like the one on Washington Avenue and the Village on State Street.
Okay, thank you.
They're ideal, but I think the more difficult.
They're very difficult to get. And many towns have none, or they have less than 10.
Richard, that Washington Avenue, you said 20?
20% of 225.
20%, okay. I thought you said 20, I was going to ask how many.
No, 20% of the 225, the 220.
Yeah, let me jump in here.
Yeah, we talked about this.
This is a project that directly involved with. There's 225 on the west side of Washington Avenue. There'll be a retail component. And part of the original discussions I had with the developer was to have a percentage of affordable, which ended up to be 20% of 225. And that's what's happening there.
So that's 40 some odd?
Yes.
So our numerator goes up 44, the denominator goes up 225. As long as it's more than 10%, we're gaining ground.
We're gaining ground.
So 20% gains some ground.
13 years ago, ladies and gentlemen, we were at 4.2%. Now we're at 5.82%. So, and I remember meeting with Yvonne Klein, who's the chairperson of the Housing in the State of Connecticut. And we tried to map out a plan. We've worked with, like Rich Lo Presti just said, six units over at the Village on States with the Vigliotti's that we just talked about, 20% of 225. So, you know, we've tried to make strides, but I'm going to just point out what Sally just mentioned. When you're adding affordable units to a denominator, the denominator also changes. So it's sometimes difficult to make significant ground. And at the end of this, I'm going to share with everyone a project and I'd like to get everyone's opinion. But before we get there, Mrs. Caldwell, do you have anything else you'd like to?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and I just wanted to give a little bit of feedback. I have just two other questions that I wanted to get clarified. The first is that trust fund that was mentioned, how would that get funded? Is that funded through taxes? Is it done through?
So that would have to be determined how it would get funded.
Okay, all right.
So, you know, it may be an extra permitting fee. You know, that may be something that's determined. So it will be, that would be decided at the Board of Finance and Board of Slotman level.
Okay.
Yeah, the plan has several suggestions, but it's to be determined.
Yeah, I just was curious if that had been decided. And then there was also something about a tenant-based rental certificate. What is that?
So, so that was.
Jennifer, do you need help on that?
Yeah, because I know that that was something that was in the original strategies, right? That was not from the.
Okay, so there's two different types of rental assistance. One of them is tenant-based and the other one is project-based. So if you have a project-based rental assistance, it stays with the project. So therefore, let's just take one that you may know, Temple Pines or Pool Road. Those may have a number of rental assistance, rental assistance vouchers available to tenants that need them in those facilities. So there's stay with the project. A tenant-based is when the voucher goes to a prospective tenant and he can, that he or she can use that voucher anywhere that they're looking for a rental property that would be eligible for them to stay in. So it could be a property in North Haven, it could be a property in New Haven, it could be a property in Guilford, anywhere. And so it stays with the tenant and that tenant goes up to a potential landlord and says, I have a voucher, can I use it at your facility?
Okay. All right, that helps. Thanks.
Sure.
So I just had a couple of comments. The first is, one concern I have is when we're talking about, and this actually falls under the current housing strategies. One of the statements talks about providing and promoting affordable housing that is consistent with the neighborhood character connected and connected to transit services. And I just, the issue of being consistent with the neighborhood character, I think is problematic because who decides what the neighborhood character is? And whether it's, and whether that housing option is going to meet that. So that is something that I think should be considered, whether that wording needs to be changed. Because to me, what I think is consistent to the character of my neighborhood may actually be different from my neighbors. So I just, to me, that is a problematic wording because I don't know who decides that.
So the public act that, I believe it was actually the public act that contained the accessory apartment legislation actually addresses that and it does need to be changed, yeah. Because that's something that's sometimes used as an escape.
Right.
And absolutely, it's, yeah, there's no doubt, it's too subjective, yeah.
The other thing that I felt was narrow was the push towards those six areas and feeling that we're looking at options in areas that already have a lot of traffic and activity. So I will tell you, I live on, off the neighborhood, off of North Washington Avenue. And the thought of putting more multi-family units up there is going to increase the traffic on Washington Avenue significantly, which is already, since Amazon, Kane, and, you know, Quinnipiac is there, it's already bad up there. So I, and I know this is addressed in future zoning issues, but the accessory dwelling units, to me, are a way to allow for multi, to have affordable housing in neighborhoods instead of just on main highways. To me, that is pushing the concept that we only can do affordability if you're close to transit, we're if you're away from my neighborhood. And I personally think that's problematic. And I just want to say that I know, I've heard from people, well, if you have these accessory dwelling units, it could impact the value of my home. And I just, I don't think that's necessarily true. My daughter lives in Watertown, Massachusetts. She lives in a neighborhood that is, the houses are continuing to increase in their value because it's a great place to live and you have single-family homes mixed in with homes that have been redone and have units in it. And the beauty of it is, she's a young working professional living with three, I think she's got three roommates. And they're living amongst neighborhoods with families, with young kids, with people who are older. And they have created a great community. And that's what North Haven should be striving for, not this idea that if we allow affordable housing, we're going to bring in people that we don't desire. So that would be one of my big concerns about this is that without allowing some changes in zoning, which that's mentioned in there, so hopefully that will come around, you can't open up increased types of housing and reduce those barriers to having affordability. And it really does create a community where you have more diverse people who really can benefit from each other. You've got young people living with older people who are helping each other. I mean, I just think there is a vision outside of, let's be afraid of affordable housing. So that would be my comment.
Okay, anyone else in the audience here? Ann Clark, yes.
I would just like to make one comment, and that is, I 100% agree we need affordable housing. And I would say that on the street that I live in, I know at least four of the houses have what's called mother-in-law apartments. And that's not a problem. It's, you know, having, sometimes they're rented, sometimes they're with family. But that's a very good way to have affordable housing. The other thing, my big concern is, in all the places where town staff, town boards that exist have the responsibility for monitoring, I'm not quite sure how that will work since I think our town staff and our volunteer boards are already pretty busy. So I think that's something that really needs to be looked at.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else? Mrs. Barrett?
I have just a couple of comments and then a couple of questions. So I realize that we're mandated to use the area median income for North Haven, which I believe was pointed out to be $99,700. But I think the median income for North Haven is actually higher than that, is it not? It's somewhere around 110, 120, something like that.
Yeah, it may very well be. I have not looked at that recently. That may very well be. Because I know we're one of the higher ones in our comp.
We're one of the higher ones. So in some ways, it's a bit of a disadvantage for this particular town to be forced to use that particular metric and 80% of it for calculation. So I just wanted to point that out. And also, I also wanted to point out, the numbers that were quoted in terms of the ratio, the 5.82%, we're using 2021 numbers for the number of affordable housing units that we have. But as was pointed out by Attorney Capola, we're using the 2010 census numbers in the denominator. So the expectation is that that denominator will be significantly higher, which will make the percentage much lower, in fact, than 5.82%. Is that your expectation?
Well, I don't know that it will be much lower, but it's anticipated that it will be lower, yes.
Right, so if the denominator is larger, probably. Okay, and so my question is, based upon the Connecticut statute, is there actually a penalty associated with having less than 10% affordable housing?
So it makes, it makes the land use agency, should the land use agency deny an application that comes in under the statute, it makes the procedure apply to an appeal. So it changes the burden on the land use agency. And it's a much higher burden. And there's a shifting of, you know, the whole process. Because, you know, just in terms of the briefing and so forth, it's the municipality that then, you know, is carrying that higher burden. And it's complicated. And I don't want to get into the legalese part of it.
So it's not a financial burden, but perhaps. So it's not a financial burden, but perhaps a reduction in our autonomy or authority?
I, I would say, um, yes, authority. And I would say too, you know, we've, we, we started out, um, in, in terms of the discretion that's afforded to our land use agencies, um, you know, before there was ever an affordable housing statute that, that really they could do no wrong, right? That the, the people were deciding what they wanted in their community. And, and, you know, with that burden shifting, that discretionary element, you know, it's eliminated. There needs, there needs to be, um, within the, the parameters of the statutory language, um, there needs to be justification for the denial that is supported by evidence in the record, um, that meets that, that standard. Um, and, and it's a diff, it's a difficult, it's not, it's not impossible, um, you know, to be successful on appeal. But it is at, as I think many people know, it, it, it's unusual for a municipality to prevail in an affordable housing case.
Okay, so... So, so if we were below the, the ten percent level and a builder came in and said, "I want to build all affordable housing," we would have a very difficult time saying no, is that...
Unless there, unless there was a basis for denying it.
Got it, okay.
Um, and, and again, um, it's, it's not just, it's not just health and safety, um, and I'm, I'm, you know, really limiting the words here. But, um, there are other matters which, um, could be taken into consideration. I had a case, um, for Berlin that I won last year. Um, and, uh, it was very involved factually. Uh, but there was a restrictive covenant that was on the property that was not being complied with and, you know, fortunately, we were, you know, we were able to, uh, be successful on appeal.
I, I think also, Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, but in those cities or towns that don't have sewer or, or city water, the infrastructure may not be enough to support some of this and that may be two of the other factors that come into play.
So, so the statute doesn't apply, uh, to WPCA? So if there were, um, for instance, a cleansing velocity issue or something, um, of that nature, that, that, you know, that may be a, a basis for denial, um, that, you know, if it got appealed, that the court would, you know, side with the authority. Um, so, you know, there's, there's instances, even with, also with wetlands. Um, so it just depends on the particular facts.
Got it, okay. And, um, I believe in, in section one, point one, point three, there's reference to an approved administrator who would be responsible for annual reporting on housing, of your housing affordability plan. Who, who would that be or is that subject to discretion of the...
So I think that you're talking about, are you talking about the administrator of the affordable housing plan?
Yes.
Okay, so within the affordable, uh, or affordable, affordability plan is what I meant. So for a particular project that contains affordable housing, there's submitted an affordability plan. There's components of it that are required under the law. Um, there has to be an administrator identified, okay? Um, so they're, they're principally responsible for making sure, you know, that those affordable units are being constructed in accordance with the, with the plan. And, um, that there are people living in those units that are eligible to live in those units. Um, and so, um, again, I mentioned, there's been issues with, uh, the administrator not being a suitable administrator. So the idea would be that potentially we would require municipal approval of the administrator, whether it's potentially using a third party, um, that has experience in affordable housing because there, you know, there are companies that, uh, do provide oversight on eligibility, again, um, to make sure that there's compliance with the law and the, the people that the law is intended to benefit are the people that are actually in the units. Um, because, you know, there've been, there's, there's, there's definitely been, um, non-compliance. Yeah.
And, and to that point, actually, um, I think there are several budgetary consequences that were referenced in this plan. And I think it's, it's a difficult thing to gauge, particularly when you're talking about, um, support staff and you mentioned third-party administration for, uh, from potentially a housing authority or SCROG staff or, um, marketing materials. All of these things could potentially be costs to the town of North Haven. And I think it's, it's difficult to gauge what those costs might be, but I think that...
And that, and that needs to be all part of the process, right? Figuring out if we're gonna, if we're gonna embark upon something, what's the bottom line, that's gonna have to be the analysis, right? For every part of it. Um, just in terms of that administrative piece though, that administrator that, again, is appointed through the affordability plan, um, that, that would be on the developer to pay that administrator. The town would not pay that administrator. It, we would just require municipal approval of the administrator to make sure that they're hiring somebody competent or have somebody competent on staff.
So that's more qualifications, not necessarily cost?
Yeah, not cost to the town. It wouldn't be a cost to the town.
Also, if I may, the COGS also give money from places other than towns. And so I'm, I'm here providing a service to North Haven. I do not believe North Haven is paying anything for it. They've got state brand money given to the COGS.
That's right then, yes.
I see. So North Haven doesn't contribute to COGS and that, that money isn't...
That's one source of info for COGS among others.
Among others. And, uh, and lastly, um, there were several suggestions for how to, um, perhaps incentivize, uh, various forms of affordable housing. And of course, there's always that concern about the safety risks associated with changing any type of zoning regulations. Would this be something that perhaps our, our fire chief might be involved with?
Our building official?
A, a, as well as our, our building department? Because again, um, you know, this might be existing housing and not necessarily things that are renovated or undergoing planned review. Um, and so they wouldn't, by, by definition, fall under their responsibility. But I think again, if we're talking about changing zoning regulations, we certainly would not want to have any of the safety risks associated.
So, um, the, the officials that you mentioned, they get copies of all the zoning applications, um, all the major ones. So they would get a copy of any text amendment to change the zoning regulations, to review and, and opine. Um, so, yeah, if there was an, if there was an issue, you know, from a fire code perspective, um, you know, that's, that's pretty standard. Um, you know, that, that, all, all of the agencies that are in charge of code enforcement, if it's something that would trigger their authority, of course, it would go. But in most towns, you know, it, they're, they're made aware of the fact that there is an application that's pending.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else here? All right, so let me, uh, let me, if there's no other comments on Zoom, there's none here in the audience. Uh, let me throw out, uh, an idea, a project that I've been working on to get some feedback, okay? So we heard tonight that with two thousand and ten census, we're at five-point-eight-two percent. We don't know what the, what the, the most recent census is going to yield. So for years here, I've been working on bringing train stations to North Haven. And, um, I, as part of, uh, being a co-chair of the State Rail Advisory Board, uh, putting train stations up and down I, I ninety-one, working with the DOT. I always thought that a, a good way to pick up a lot of affordable housing is to create a transit-oriented district. Now, I've, I've spoken with the state, I have spoken with the DOT, and we are in line to receive a train station. And I thought that, that I've been involved with discussions with Pfizer also to put, uh, the affordable housing, workforce housing, let's say, to attract, uh, that coincides with the adjusted gross income percentages that can attract, you know, a young pharmacist out of school who wants access to a train station. Having a TOD, I know for a fact, as I've spoken with the state, that the state would embrace the concept, if I can convince the property owner to change the designation of the land from commercial, industrial to housing. So, uh, I know, Joe, that you've spoken, I know that you've been, um, you've appeared at planning and zoning meetings throughout, uh, your years here at North Haven. And I know Mrs. Caldwell talked about the traffic issue on Washington Avenue. So what if, and it's a big what if, we can create a TOD tied in with a train station to put the affordable workforce housing, uh, off of either Divine Street or Stiles? What would your opinion be on that? Mrs. Caldwell, I'm gonna ask you first because that's a traffic issue now that you talked about.
So does everybody know what workforce housing is? It's, it's deed restricted, deed restricted housing, um, for households earning between eighty percent and a hundred and twenty percent
Yes.
of area median income, so...
So are they apartments?
They'd be apartments.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I'm not sure where Stiles is.
Oh, you, you go for where Jay was, I saw State Street.
Right there.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's one option. I mean, I, um, it sounds like a decent plan.
But I have to convince the property owner though. But, but you see, there's gonna be incentives with this though. The state will embrace this. As I've said, I've already talked to the state, I've had a brief conversation with the governor on this. Joe, I'd like to hear your opinion on that.
Well, if you could limit it to, uh, workforce, it might work. However, I have my doubts that you can lim, will be able to limit it and, uh, and satisfy the, uh, the housing advocates, uh, at the same time.
So let's, uh, ask, uh, Mr. Fink. Ben, what do you think of that concept? How do you, how do you think that would play?
I think the important thing is that there are options, there's as diverse a range of options as possible. And I think that's expressed well here in the plan. And I think if that's the only housing development that's offered, then, you know, I think, I think Joe may be right. Then there would be a lot of advocates. But if it's presented as part of a comprehensive plan, makes a lot of sense.
Rod and Richard, how do you see that?
This is Rod Williams. The only, uh, the only, I think it's a great idea because anything we could do to work in this area is great. But it, I don't think that workforce, um, counts toward the ten percent that we needed. So it might be not just, you know, housing, affordable housing people, but anyone that wants to, you know, raise our attainment, might want more than that. But I, I think it's a great idea overall, I applaud it.
Rich, you, you know, I think I've talked to you about this before.
Yeah, I, and you know, I would be, uh, a hundred percent in agreement with it because that, that's what's being stressed around the, um, uh, the train stations that have been, being built, uh, across the street along the Hartford, uh, New Haven-Hartford-Springfield line. And, uh, they're cur, uh, New Britain has done it with the busway. They've, uh, been able to put housing projects up there or, uh, housing opportunities up there as well as Windsor and, and so forth. So I, I would think, uh, that would, yeah, be, uh, TOD, a trans, transit-oriented development would be great. Because we even talked, if you go way back, Mike, when we had, um, when we did some, uh, charrettes and we talked about how, how could we consolidate some of those properties there to make a whole district with retail, housing, uh, and so forth, uh, all, all around, uh, the new train station, uh, um, off of, um, more Divine Street than Stiles. Uh, I think, uh, you know, talking with Pfizer is great. You talked about that this morning at the Economic Development Commission. The issue is gonna be there similar to the, um, the property, uh, the chemical company that used to be there, uh, that would cost a lot to remediate, is that the remediation there, uh, has, uh, for Pfizer property, uh, has only been done up to the commercial level. And if they then have to clean it up to the housing level, that would be a huge expense to them compared to, um, across the highway where Joseph Cohen is and behind Joseph Cohen.
So the state is incentivized though to help fund the brownfields if we can put this concept together. So, um, so I've got some work to do on this in terms of seeing if we can bring this forward. Uh, but six million dollars has already been invested in the design of the train station. I worked closely with the DOT for years on this. So there's, there's already money in the game, so to speak. So, and I know for a fact that once the funding gets freed up from the federal government to the state, that we are in the next, we're in the queue, so to speak. We're, uh, like one or two, the next one or two. So that may be a way for us to pick up some, uh, some numbers in a quick fashion. Ben?
I think the other advantage is, you know, a lot, I, I've heard, I've heard it said, "People don't fear change, they fear loss."
Right.
And so there's a certain, you know, as, as I've heard people say, "People move to a place because they like that place," right? And so any change that happens in it, there's a fear that they're gonna lose something. They're gonna lose, you know, either, either property values or character or anything else. And doing any sort of development that shows we can make change and still keep our community feeling the way we like it lowers the fear and lowers the, the extent to which people are gonna oppose other kind of development in the future. And I think, you know, speaking to the specific project that we're talking about that, that I'm involved with and, and, you know, you mentioned it before, the other thing that contributes to that is doing what you just did so well, which is, here's an idea we have, what are your thoughts on it? And if this project that we're talking about is successful, we're gonna have that not only at board of select meetings, we'll do that inside of churches, inside of community organizations, inside of all the places where people gather. So lots of people will have the chance to be part of the process of making the change and not feel like it's being imposed on them against their will.
So, thank you, Ben. And I just shared with you a small piece of the vision because the larger vision and the plan that I'm trying to work on also includes crosswalk signalization, bike paths in that area. And to develop corner properties, I'm already in discussions with developers in transformational things like changing homes where people are aging out and turning them into restaurants and destinations in that area. So, but it's a, it's a, it's, it's, it's a complicated thing. I've got the vision in my mind as just executing the different parts. Absolutely, that's a good way, and, um, I know what Joe just said. But it's a good way to really pick up some numbers here and make some significant progress. But, but create, but, but create around it a destination. Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm just curious, like what, you know, on page twenty-one, we have some comparative supersized towns. And like, for instance, like what is Berlin, you know, and I know Berlin well and because I have family there and everything. How are they at eight-point-seven-seven percent? What have they done that maybe we could do as well? Uh, even, even Farmington, um, at seven-point-five-five. I haven't been in Bloomfield in a while, but they're already over ten, so... So it, it seems like it would be nice to know, you know, and those are, you know, to go back to a lot of the comments that we've made, I know Berlin's very similar in nature, Farmington very similar in nature to, uh, to nor, you know, to many aspects of North Haven. So, you know, somewhere they've done something different or, or already done something different where they're much closer to the ten percent. So it would be nice to know maybe how some, some areas have been successful. And Wyndham is at, I don't know Wyndham at all, twenty-eight percent, but, uh, but...
Very different kind of town.
Very different kind of town from what I understand. But I don't think Berlin is or even, uh...
It's very rule-matic, isn't it?
Or, or Farmington, you know, in many respects.
And I think one thing as part of the project we're doing at SCROG is, you know, one with the hope that the committee is gonna be seated and we'll be working together. What I, the committee will be doing many things. What I'll be working with them on is specifically how to do this community education and co-creation process. Another part of it is we're doing this same effort in a whole bunch of towns across the region, right? So just today, I was in Hamden and Wallenford. They're doing similar work, working with Guilford, um, Woodbridge, East Haven, hopefully, maybe a few others. Guilford, Woodbridge, East Haven, hopefully, maybe a few others. I think the opportunity for co-learning across towns, like you're saying, both on the citizen level, the resident level, and the government level is tremendous. And so to be able to ask that question and say, what are you doing that's working? And what are the challenges that you have? And I think opening up those networks is a huge part of what we're talking about, about education. I think it's a great idea.
So I can, I can share some information with you too. And again, I'm revamping the affordable housing page. But the COG did host, one of the meetings that they had, there was someone from Berlin, Jim Mahoney. Berlin is a client of mine, and I was involved in drafting their affordable housing plan. They have several regulations that require affordable units, and that's one way that they've built stock. They also do have a TOD that has, has, is going to be terrific for them in terms of bringing workers to the area too. I mean, that's obviously workforce housing, that's why you do it fundamentally. So, and we did hear from employers when we were doing our community outreach, you know, there, there are people in need of affordable housing that are working in North Haven, that are living elsewhere. I just want to bring that up too, keep that in mind. But yeah, Berlin is assumed to be at 10% because they have a number of projects that have been approved, that are in the process of being constructed, that have tens of units in them. So once they get those COs, they're, they're going to be at 10%. So, but I could share that, share that with you.
Yeah, I think, I think as it develops, it would be something to maybe find out what, you know, what's been successful elsewhere, you know, and maybe see if there's some synergy, some things that we could do that, you know, might be similar. But the, yeah, in terms of the, in terms of limits and everything, I mean, I know from friends of mine, former clients of mine in Fairfield County, one of the biggest problems I have is, is that, you know, if you're a fireman or policeman or paramedic, EMT, you can't afford to live in Greenwich. You know, and I, I have a son who's, as fiance, are both EMTs. And, you know, they fall into the category of, you know, using, they get 80% and using 30% of their, or at least 30% of their combined income to pay for, paid for rental property. So, so I think, I think there are a lot of, a lot of reasons to, you know, especially as our population. There was a similar article in today's paper about people leaving Connecticut once again. And we've had no, or very little population growth with an aging population. We, you know, that then for, you know, we want people to be able to still live here, come up with ways for people to, to be able to live here and take care of old people like myself. So I think this is, you know, may not be perfect, but it's, I think it's the first step for maybe us to.
All right, so to that, to that point, Bill, now, it was my, it's my, it was my goal to try to see how quickly we could submit a plan, but I know there's some concerns here. So if we go to now the next item, possible action. So Jennifer, can you explain what our options are at this point? We've heard from the public, we've talked about a long-term vision, we have Ben here, who has been doing this now for the Council of Governments. I want to try to send a plan in right away and get us, and get a plan in. But what are our options right now?
So your options are, you can move to adopt the plan as it's drafted. You can move to revise if you, if you have some simple revisions that you want to make tonight, if there's anything that stands out to you, that you think should come out of the plan or be added to the plan based upon any of the comments that you've heard, you, you can move to make those simple revisions. If there's something that you need more information about, that you want to have more information about, or that you think should be included, like if you wanted us to include more information perhaps in the appendix about the eligibility piece, if you think that that's something that's, that's important to be included so people have an understanding, you know, we could, we can make that substantive change, bring that back to you. I, you have a meeting next week. I mean, that's not a big, that would not be a big deal. I mean, we could put it, you know, before, before you were down.
All right, so I want to just come back to both Mr. Williams and Mr. DiMartino, who weighed in on some of the components here. So if we voted on this plan, although there's some parts of the plan that some here tonight disagree with, are we obligated to implement every component of the plan?
Absolutely not. So it's a guidance document, the same as your POCD. So, you know, you know, there was some concern expressed about the zoning regulations and the zoning regulations being amended. People have to remember that there's a process that has to be followed legally. Upon, I mean, upon receipt of a tax amendment, there has to be a public hearing. So the public will have an opportunity to weigh in on any proposed changes to the zoning regulations. They'll have an opportunity to be heard. And, you know, there's, there's a process. There's a process to even appeal if they disagree with, you know, with the decision of the commission with regard to an amendment. And as far as, you know, the, the trust fund issue, you know, that's, that's something else that has to go through a process in terms of that being established. So there would be an opportunity again for the public to comment on that before, you know, anything would be established. So, you know, many of these elements, certainly they're, they require not just action, but they require public particip, or opportunities for public participation if they disagree with, you know, the final form that the action may take. I think there's, there's going to be opportunities really at every step to weigh in.
So is there an option for us to poll the public here and then have them tell us how they'd like us to proceed tonight?
That's entirely up to you.
Okay.
That's my legal question.
I want to get Ben's input on this. Ben?
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it's importance, I mean, well, I can just go.
Yes.
How you feel about that? The idea that, that the, the select would vote, would vote to adopt the plan as it is, recognizing that it's not binding, it's a set of, it's, and that these things will be worked out. Like, would that feel, would you feel, would you feel hurt? Would that feel, to what extent would that feel good enough to do?
I guess the question is, who would work it out?
Right. Select work.
Well, that's part of it, but there's a potential for a commission that was mentioned before, there's a potential for appointing other, other individuals who would be administrators.
And all those choices, as I understand it, would be made by the Board of Select. Whether to get those, make those appointments, hire those people.
Well, as far as, on page seven, 1.1.1, creating an affordable housing commission, are we saying that would be a permanent commission? I mean, our charter creates a whole bunch of commissions, and then by ordinance, we have other commissions authorized, like the Economic Development Commission, the Blade Commission. So if we want to make this a permanent part of our town government, it would have to go through the ordinance process.
Yes, and it would go to the town meeting.
It would go to a town meeting.
Yes.
So that's the difference between. It says Board of Select here. We would probably appoint the folks to it.
If it's a committee, it would go, as you appointed.
Yes.
The advisory committee.
Right.
You can appoint the committee.
Right.
But if it were a commission, it would go to the town meeting, absolutely.
Well, we would have to.
And you call the town meetings.
We call the town meeting, and, and it would be formed by the town meeting as part of our government. But then it would be probably an appointed commission, and then we would do the appointing.
Yes.
And hopefully, we will appoint well, because it is, this commission is given a lot of very important responsibilities. So hopefully, it would be based on their professional expertise rather than the political affiliation after their name. This is how important I think this commission could be to this overall issue. So, you know, there, there is a lot of process here. But I have no problem with taking a hand vote from the folks. But I have, you said that we could make a little change, depending, based on what we heard. Could we propose a little change based on what we just personally think as a member of the Board of Select? Good. Because that's what I like to do. It's very minor, something that we talked about in the past, Bill and Mike. I'm on page 14, 4.4.1, where it talks about, these are for, provide supportive complementary municipal programs. And again, it says because of the housing-related benefits, North Haven should. So should is a good word. It, it's leaving it open to a future process. And the first little dot there says maintain slash enhance elderly tax relief. Now, we have several elderly tax relief programs, one of which has expired, and this is the one that we talked about. The senior tax freeze ordinance has expired, and I was a little upset by that, we talked about that. So I would like, for me, just to include something that should be, should be considered, where it says maintain enhanced elderly tax relief, including the senior tax freeze.
Okay.
Just those four words.
Make a motion.
Including the senior, five words, sorry. Yes, I will make a motion to add on 4.4.1 after enhance elderly tax relief, including senior tax, including a senior tax freeze.
Okay. Motion made, is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right, I like your suggestion.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then I have one question for counsel. The most important thing in, in this document is on this introductory letter, it says that the statute requires that the plan specify. You, you, you highlighted this in your opening remarks, specify how the municipality intends to increase the number of affordable housing developments. So specify is the word that I want to focus on in my question to you. Based on your familiarity with other, first of all, where does this go, this plan? Who's going to look at it?
It's going, it's going to OPM.
OPM? Oh. And are they going to actually look at it and read it?
I don't know.
You don't know? Can they reject it?
No.
Okay.
It's just a middle, there's no rejection.
Okay. So in your, in your opinion, Counselor, does this proposed plan, is it, does it hit the threshold of adequate specificity? Because there are some very specific sections. I mean, pages six through 14, or six through 16 are the meat and potatoes of this, the strategies. And some of them are very detailed, but some of them use words that lawyers like, like promote and enhance and encourage. Sorry, but we do. You know, so, you know, they're a little vaguer. Okay?
Non-committal.
Yes, that's, we like that. So is, overall, I mean, there is a lot of great specificity in here in some of the strategies, but some of them are a little broad with words, as I mentioned. So are you satisfied with the specificity of this document?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
And I, and I have reviewed tons of them.
Okay.
Um, including, remember, you had a prior draft.
Yes.
And I think this is a much different plan than where you started.
Right. So that satisfies me, but I will wait to see the hearings raised.
All right, so I just want to say one other, I want to reiterate one thing before we, I'm going to, I'm going to ask for the input and tell me what you think on this. Okay. So Joe, when Rod mentioned earlier about this is a framework, and I know you had some concerns with some of the individual components on certain pages, knowing what our town attorney just said about that, we're not obligated on every component, how do you feel about this, Joe?
Well, Joseph DiMartino, again, you're putting it in writing, it's as if the town is going to endorse everything that's in the plan. So when you take the, the instances that I pointed out, which are contrary 180 to what our town has been about, I would say that you have a lot of elimination to do before this plan can be sent up to the state, which they're not going to read it, they just want a plan. They're, they're probably never going to read it unless it's become some type of controversial type of issue. So.
So.
You need to.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me.
No, go right ahead, Joe. Okay, finish, please.
I would say you need to eliminate a lot of these suggestions. Thank you.
All right, so we hear it from Joe. I'd like to go around the room if we don't mind, okay? Rod, how do you feel?
Thank you. I, look, this is like a toolbox. It's giving you a lot of tools. You don't have to use them all. And some of them might not seem that attractive right now, but as things progress and we figure out what works and what doesn't in the town, other ones might look more attractive. So why not have as many possible options available to you? That's, that's what I thought was really great about this thing. We don't envision that all of them are going to be used, but the key is to give a very sort of broad set of possibilities. So I'm happy with what it provides.
Jane, you haven't spoken, how do you feel? Yes.
And I can even show my picture. Anyway, I guess partly why I wanted to is what Jenny already said, because my one concern was that the, the ADUs weren't even included in the plan. And I think the reason for that is that it could have been just to have, say, investigate. Because I guess, I could be wrong about this, but I had heard right now they have to be family members. But I don't know if you're planning on just doing those as people applying for, like if they want to have a non-family member live there to help with the costs. I used to work with people with disabilities, and a lot of the times if somebody needed help, it was really useful to be able to have somebody stay there with them. So I guess that's been my biggest concern, but I think Jenny mentioned it, so I don't want to make things go over. Other than that, thank you for making it so that I could be able to see it. I'm also an older person, very scared about the virus, so this was really good for that reason. So thank you, and thanks for asking me.
You're welcome, Jane. Richard, you've got 28 years of housing experience, how do you see this?
You forgot the last 10 that I've been working.
Yes, I didn't count that. 28 years before that, right.
But I'm going to defer to what Rod said. I think he said it very well. And I think it's important for this to be approved going forward. And, and I, but the thing I will add to what Rod said is the good work that Ben is going to be doing. Because his role is, is going to be to take this plan and hold public meetings throughout the town over the next six months, a year, year and a half, to delve more into exactly what some of those sections involve and how they could be accomplished and why it's important for those things to happen. So I just wanted to add that. But I, I would go along with what Rod said, he said it very well, I can't say it any better.
All right, I'm going to offer.
I just wanted to add a thank you to all of you that have been doing this for so long. I know that you've all put in a lot, a lot of energy and time and, and exploration. So I just wanted to say, you know, as a, as a resident of North Haven, I really appreciate the effort that's been put into this. So thank you.
Thank you, Jane. All right, so we'll start, I'm going to go to Jane, we haven't heard. Then we'll go to Bill, then we'll go around the room, go the other way. Jane, what would you recommend we do tonight?
I would recommend that we adopt it.
Okay.
Because it says in here that we have to do an update at least once every five years. But it doesn't say that we can't do it sooner. So if we get into this and it comes to light that there are some things wrong, or some things that we should do differently, there's nothing to say that we couldn't make changes, let's say, three or four years down the road.
Okay.
So that's, that's my.
Got your opinion, okay. Bill, go right ahead.
That's the same thing I was going to say. Do we need something in there in this booklet saying that it's adaptable for the changes, a paragraph or anything in there?
All right, I'm. All right, I'm gonna get to that at the end as part of a strategy. I don't wanna say a compromise, but another solution, but, so, that's a good thought, Bill.
All right, and one other thing, Sally was talking about relating to the chart was in the back, um, the beginning of there, and understanding it, if we had like a, what do they call it, when you put it on, uh, refer to another number or page to that main item, to explain it more clearly for people?
Okay. Ann, how do you see it? What should we do tonight?
As you know, I always have an opinion.
Yes.
Um, first of all, I wanna say thank you to the committee who put this together. I know what it's like to be on the committee and go to a lot of work and then have everybody pull it apart. Um, my philosophy is, it's always good to have a list, because if you have a list, you can add to it, you can take things off, and check things off when they're accomplished. I look at this like a list, and I think we should. Sounds like it's a living, working document, and I think we should prove it.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Jenny, how do you see it?
I guess, um, you know, I, I agree with Jane. My biggest concern is that, um, that the focus of this is on housing in specific areas, and, I mean, there, there's opportunities in some of those things on the list, you look at accessory dwelling units, but I personally would love to see it specifically mentioned, because I think that then brings the opportunity for affordable housing within our neighborhoods, like what I was talking about that you see in Watertown, because, um, as opposed to, when you read this document, it makes it feel very much like, these are the areas where we want affordable housing, and really, we want affordable housing options throughout North Haven, and as a benefit to North Haven. You know, there, there are people who've lived here their whole lives, there are also people who've been, who've been, you know, who've just moved, or who've been here for, you know, I've only been here sixteen years, so I guess I'm a newbie, but, um, but I think that it, it just would give us some more options, and it would make, it would make the plan look a little bit more comprehensive, as opposed to, we're trying to stick our affordable housing in these places.
So, you would, you would recommend adjustments, additions, or deletions, whatever, rather than vote it tonight?
I would prefer to see an adjustment to have two things, that sentence about, you know, the character of the neighborhood being changed, and then the second piece being that, that somewhere, exploring options for accessory dwelling units, um, within, within North Haven.
All right, before I propose a compromise so all are comfortable, let's hear from Mrs. Barrett. Nancy, what do you think we should do tonight?
So, although I asked a lot of questions and, and made comments, I certainly am an advocate for diversity of housing options in our town, both for individuals who live here their entire lives and are just evolving into different phases of their lives and have different housing needs, as well as, as something that would attract people to move, uh, to North Haven. So, so I think that, that having that wealth of different options is, is a good thing. Um, I, I certainly am a big advocate of having a plan that has stated objectives and strategies, and so I think going forward, you could even have , uh, subcomponents to each one of those objectives and, and really flesh out as we get into the real nitty-gritty details. Um, whatever organizational body is responsible for carrying this out, I think we'd have to address each one of these components that Attorney Capola has, has outlined in far more detail than what was presented this evening. Um, but I agree with the, the comment that Rod made, which is, you have to start somewhere. This is a set of tools. It's a guideline. Um, but again, I, I would like to just ensure that we have an organizational body in addition to the Board of Selectmen that will be guiding this process, not on a monthly basis, but on a much more regular basis. So, I'd be in favor of supporting it, uh, with language included that allowed for adjustments in the future.
All right, so let's stay on that, 'cause that's the compromise I was gonna offer. Uh, and, um, so, in this, 'cause we have Joe and Jenny, who, who are recommending some tweaks or changes. So, this is directed to Jennifer and Ben. So, if we submitted a plan with a cover letter saying that this is the, the menu of options the town has come up with, um, the town, um, recognizes that it may not be obligated to comply with every single component, and there'll be deletions or adjustments that can be made, and let's say it's over every year, it's under review. Is that acceptable to submit a plan like this?
Jen, tell me what you think. My understanding is that's implied.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't even think it needs to be said.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Because that's, that's just the nature of it, and as you said so well, right, it can be adopted anytime. Isn't, you don't need to wait five years to do it again, so, yeah.
Regarding the, um, accessory dwelling unit issue.
Yeah, I can very easily add, if you wanna direct me to add.
Well, here's what, here.
I know where I would add it.
I just, um, I think it's important to understand that when the Planning and Zoning Commission last May, and the Board of Selectmen a few months ago opted out of the state regulations.
Statute.
A state statute saying what you have to do, uh, with accessory dwelling units. We opted out, so that gives us, our, our planning and zoning process, Planning and Zoning, um, Commission, with all of their processes, the, um, the ability to adopt accessory dwelling unit regulations. Now, for them to be affordable, correct me if I'm wrong, we could have a lot, we could have accessory dwelling units in the town, but under our regulations that we decide.
Yes.
But for them to be affordable, under affordable housing definition, they, correct me if I'm wrong, do they have to be deed restricted?
They do. So.
Okay.
So, when, when they pass that statute, um, they put very specifically, um, in the statute that you cannot require through your accessory apartment or accessory dwelling unit regulations that they be affordable. But they also revised, um, eight thirty GK, which is, uh, what identifies what constitutes affordable units.
Yeah.
And they put a provision in for accessory apartments that they have to be ten-year deed restricted at the eighty percent of median income, such that individuals are not spending more than thirty percent.
I think it's gonna be very difficult for owners of single-family residences to wanna have their property deed restricted like that, because it'll affect their ability to sell in the future. And I think, I think we have a better chance getting more AD, accessory dwelling units just on their own, with, under, that's what I think will ultimately happen, I hope, when the, um, accessory dwelling unit regulations are adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, but, um, I have no problem with it being mentioned, because you can have them affordable with the deed restrictions. Like I said, we only have twenty-three deed-restricted affordable units now. They're tough to come by, but I, I, I think, I, I want, I want that to be understood, that there's more than one way to have affordable dwelling units in town, not just as affordable, I mean, accessory, what did I say?
It's a new beginning.
There's more than, bleh, there's more than one way to have accessory dwelling units in town. They don't have to be affordable.
And you, and in fact, you cannot require them through your regulations.
To be affordable, right.
Because that's against the statute, yeah.
Right, so, but we could certainly include in here, um, as you suggested, you, you, you looked for the spot. I've been looking for it too.
And, yeah, on, under.
Which number, what page do you want?
I would do it under three point two. I would add, under three point two, I would add, um, a strategy related to.
Three point two one?
Sure, we could put it in there. I could add something in there.
So, review existing zoning regulations.
Or, I mean, it's even, it's, it could be, it could be under three point two point two, because that says create new opportunities.
Okay.
Uh, and that's the area where it's like a missing middle, or we could have a little separate.
Three point three might work even better, because it's increased the number of other types of, on the next page.
Three point two three on the, on page twelve.
Yep, we could put it there as well.
Two different places. You think it's better on, under three point two?
Three point two two?
I, I have a strong opinion.
Joseph DiMartino, Joseph DiMartino here. It seems like you're devoting a lot of time to this accessory dwelling issue that's been decided already, that's really a minor factor in town.
It hasn't been decided. We're, we're, we opted out of state regulations, but we're hoping for planning and zoning regulations. Anyway, which, which, um, I'll prefer to your, which, three point two two?
Again, three, three point two is where it should go.
Right.
Um, and, yeah, I could craft either a separate strategy with regard to it, or I, I think it, yeah, I mean, I think it is probably most, um, well, I think I would do a separate strategy, because when you look, um, when you look at three point two point two.
Mm-hmm.
It's talking about, um, multifamily housing topologies on smaller parcels.
Okay.
Right, as an example, and then it addresses middle housing. And, and I think that with accessory apartments, you're talking about something else entirely. I think I, I would, I would rather do a three, a three point two point four, um, and do a strategy specifically with regard to accessory dwelling units.
Right. So, um, can I make a, a motion now to, to?
Yeah, sure.
To, that we would do that, but.
And we would, and I would suggest, um, I would suggest then that it come back to you, um, you know, and it, and, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't continue the public hearing. It would come back to you, uh, to be voted on at a Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, I would make the propos, you know, propose the language to you, and then you can vote.
Isn't there a way we can do it now?
Oh, if you wanna do it, I'm happy.
I would want to.
Sure, okay, if you have something in mind, I'm ready to type it.
Okay, um.
So, my, my, look, uh, my concern with it is that, we're making an adjustment here. There's others here who want adjustments, and where will it stop then tonight?
Okay.
I'm concerned about that.
And three point two point two, it can be read, it doesn't specifically talk about ADUs, but it does talk about more flexible zoning regulations, including, which could include zoning to allow for ADUs.
You could just do that.
Right.
And, right, with the understanding that, you know, that, you know, ADUs, um, I think ADUs will not necessarily be affordable because of the deed restriction requirement. That's very important to understand.
Three point two point two could just say, this could include missing middle housing and/or co-housing developments, shared amenities and/or ADUs.
And/or ADUs, okay?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to include and/or ADUs in three point two point two after, with shared amenities.
All right, is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pursuant to, can I make a motion to adopt the plan?
Yeah, I mean, I wanna really, my thought was to take a vote here tonight, so.
Pursuant to item four of our agenda, I'll make a motion to adopt the.
So, I like, maybe just on that one note first, though, I like that most of, a lot of the language is conditional, you know, like, consider.
Yes.
You know, I mean, we, you know, clearly, we wanna establish an organizational capacity. Do we have to do the trust fund, or that also is voluntary?
No, again.
You get explorer establishing.
Yes.
But you've done a lot, I think, you almost rank ordered them in a way where there are things that we should do or need to do, but there are other things we should consider. So, you know, I kinda like the fact that I think there, we've gone down the list, and there are things that we might never do, because we're only gonna consider.
So, my thought was to have, there's nine, nine here, I think, between Zoom and the public. Um, I think Elizabeth dropped off. My thought was to have a vote with the public to tell us if they want us to adopt the plan tonight.
I thought we just did that.
No, we didn't vote, no, but the public didn't vote.
Oh.
We gave our opinion.
Well, we heard their, okay.
All right, so, what do you, what do you think, Jen?
I don't think it's necessary.
All right, okay.
I think they've received their comment.
We had our public hearing. We, we vote.
Yes, we vote.
All right, so we heard the opinions. All right.
Pursuant to item three on our agenda, I will make a motion to adopt the affordable housing plan with the two amendments that we voted on, and correcting, exiting to existing, 'cause that really changes the meaning. Sorry.
You always miss a word.
Um, and so I'll make that motion.
Oh, second.
All right, any other discussion? We heard the public's opinion. We asked the questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, motion to adjourn.
Some will.
Second, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for being here. Thank you.